And myself saying, you're not included in that.
Everyone here tonight, and we're gonna start with accentuate the positive. I don't know if we have anyone out there who would like to say anything? Okay, not right now.
I thank Mr. Barry for the bonus. But that was his team here. That was it was a surprise. You're welcome, Paul Dert.
I'd like to read something from Laura Latham. Uh, the PTE is pleased to share the tentative contract agreement that was reached with the Phoenix Town Schools on June sixth. Was ratified by our membership on the last day of the school year, and we look forward to this new contract starting July one. We appreciate the long hours and hard work of both teams to come to this agreement. Our members are enjoying their summer break, and we are looking forward to Russell's summer before coming back to the fall. For another amazing year. We appreciate all your work and we will see you in August. So that's wonderful. Do we have anybody online, Dawn? It doesn't look like it. It doesn't look like, but Joe?
No, sir.
Oh, yeah. So no citizens comment?
Sure. Can we go back to you as an tweet the positive?
Yes.
Can I have the positive?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna thank everyone for graduation. It was a great graduation, but scary. And staff was really great. Um, Mr. Barry and Officer Hol were on the phone a lot. Um, and it it could have gone a lot worse. I had a lot of people that were at graduation or saw it on TV. And they were very complimentary of how well it like. It was calm and collective, and we were able to get all the kids graduating, but also um, knowing that there was a lot of trauma and. Um, you know, people wondering how close it was to their home. And so I just wanna thank everyone for the hard work and being calm and um, just the. Great resilience that our district has and and support of everyone. So um, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
And the first responders.
Yes.
Yeah, that was pretty scary. Um, now a little super temporary.
Yeah, mine was just the appreciation of the of the graduation as well, just for um, definitely the virtues wonders, the 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 audience, uh, the board. We, you know, that's a that's a milestone and uh, uh, walk across the stage means something. So just uh, appreciation of Sergeant. All and his communication and we got through it. And that's that's the only one, only thing I wanted to reiterate. So thank you.
Yeah, it was kinda like such a great coordinated effort that happened in that day. Um, our next topic would be the special education services model for our per diocot. Tiffany.
Thanks. Oops, turn it off. Kind of.
There we go.
Finger.
Can you hear enough?
Now we can.
Yeah. Nice to be here.
Yes.
Alright. Are you doing the presentation?
Yes. Well, thank you, Board, for allowing me to talk about special education. Do I have a time limit? Just. Alright, um, I wanted to share just some changes to our special education service where we're going uh, for next year. Um, just just to remind us, we've had a long way in the last six to seven years. When it comes to providing inclusive education for all of our students, but in particular, our students with disabilities. So. It has been a lot of hard work on the part of our special education staff and our general education staff, but it really couldn't happen without the support of school board. Such or just stuff. So I just wanna thank you um, and a supportive superintendent who has really promoted um, inclusivity as well. So students with disabilities, it's it's one of the um, groups that are traditionally marginalized, but still very much segregated in our schools. Um, because a student was born with a disability or had an illness or an accident that caused disability, oftentimes they have to attend different schools. Different classes, they ride different buses. Many times they don't get to attend the same field trips. Or assemblies that other students without disabilities do. And that was really something that we wanted to change in Phoenix Town for our students. And our first step was making sure that all of our students had the right and the ability to attend their neighborhood school. So we have students that we were serving in Central Point, and the the ESD provided classes. We contracted out with Central Point as well for classes. Um, we then started our own programs here. If you remember transition, when we contracted out with um, Ashlyn. And so it was really this movement to bring our students back in the community where they live, with their peers who don't have disabilities, with their families. A lot of our parents of students with disabilities said it was the first time they could have both their children or three of their children in the same school. So it really means a lot to us. Again, we had to increase our staff. We started um, the program here at Phoenix Elementary, where we brought staff in, we started our transition program. We moved a teacher at the high school from part-time to full-time. We added more speech pathology staff. We also added a district nurse. Which really allowed our students with medical needs to be able to attend school with their peers as well. Um, then what we did was we shifted the programs. We moved a classroom from Talented Elementary to Orchard Hill Elementary. So we could provide a continuum of services at every school. So right now, every school in our district has a TLC classroom, which is our site-based self-contained classroom. And what we call ERC, which is our Educational Resource Centers, or Resource Rooms, um, at every school building. We're gonna make some more changes as we continue our journey. Uh, we had a team. Uh, we've we've done Reading for All, which is a book written by. Um, the special ed director up in Westland Wilsonville School District. Um, they have a fully inclusive model. This last year, we took a team of special educators and we visited. We needed to see the high school. We wanna see an elementary school. We wanted to see what full inclusion looks like. Full inclusion means there are no specialized classrooms, but there are specialized staff. Their schools were really built around pods to provide a fully inclusive model, and I'm not sure just on the physical structure of our school, if we could do that. But we did get a lot of ideas of how we could make our program more inclusive. So we are under the belief and um, that special ed is a service, not a place. Sometimes we say. Uh, kids with disabilities are in special education, but truly they're kids first, they're students, and they also have an individualized education plan or an IEP. They also have disabilities. So it's about the amount of service we give them, the amount of time they need with those specialized services, and not necessarily where they are. But we've labeled kids, to be honest. We've said those are TLC kids, those are speech kids, those are um, resource kids, and we'd like to remove the stigma of the label as such. So we're going to to continue to provide special ed service, but at our elementary level, we're ready to make it more of a seamless program. That all special educators are special educators closely with our general education staff. And make sure all of our students have an entry point or access to a general education classroom. For some students, that might be ten minutes in a general ed class. Some students, it might be most of the day. Kids will get what they need, and it'll be individualized, putting the I back in IEP, individualized education plan. Our big thing is we want all students to feel part of their community. All students make sure that they feel like they belong, and that they feel safe doing that. And research and best practice shows that students that are included more in the general education setting do better academically and socially. And it's also flipped for students without disability. So um, inclusive schools have better results as well. So what we're doing for elementary, we're we're removing that silo from TLC and ERC to just special education. Um, we're one cohesive program. It doesn't mean less staff. It actually takes more staff. The reason historically in special ed, we have self-contained classrooms, it's because if you have ten kids with significant needs in one classroom. You can do it with a few aides and a teacher. But now we spread them out into, you know, six to twelve different classrooms. It takes a lot more staff to get that. Um, but I think the benefits are worth it. Um, we're also looking at our case management. Right now, for example, if we have a resource teacher who has um, thirty kids and a TLC teacher who had ten kids, that's their case management. But if we now split to a K two, three, five model, which is what they do in Westland Wilsonville, each case manager has twenty kids. So it just seems a little more fair in the paperwork aspect. And it doesn't mean like they're gonna be the only ones providing service. It's just. Who manages the IEP and make sure that services are being accounted for. So students who were in a site-based class will now be enrolled in a general education class. So every student in our elementary school next year. Will go to their neighborhood school. Um, and it's like, this was our first year that we had elementary all attending their neighborhood school. Feels really good about that. Um, but now everybody will be in a general education classroom. Again, some might just be for ten minutes. That might be just what they're ready for right now. But everybody will have a general education classroom. The things that won't change is our sensory rooms. Um, all students, if they need a sensory room, um, we we have those available at each of our elementary schools. And we'll continue to run pull-out groups for academic and social skills. Sometimes it's just hard in a regular classroom to have distractions of a bunch of other kids around. So we'll still have special ed vocations where we will pull out for those um, groups. And students will all receive the same amount of services in their IEP. No kid's IEP is changing. Um, they'll have just as much or as little as they need. It's just in a more inclusive realm. So um, again, kids might have a lot of time in specialized or a little time, but our default when we have a kid move in. Where we have them is our default is in the gen ed space as much as possible. So when we talk about field trips. Or we talk about assemblies, kids will be rostered with their gen ed class. They'll all have a desk or a table space in the gen ed class, and that's our default there. And we'll ensure that individualized support is never lost, just enhanced through intervention. Again, just like some of the worries rumors that inclusion means less support is actually, it's not less support. It's just better support with all of the team, all hands on deck, serving more students. So when we have our full team together with speech pathologists, instructional assistants, special ed staff, and then our general ed staff. Our students uh, get better service because everybody's trained, everybody's aware of their IEPs. Um, it's just, I think, gonna be better. Now, there's a lot of things because we're. We're crossing a big threshold here next year, and that's like a big point. It's not gonna be all perfect, but um, we appreciate the patience of like, we have best intentions in mind. Um, really trying to give a good inclusive experience for all of our students. Now, I guess I kept for too good time. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from anyone?
I have some comments.
Yeah.
Amazing. Um, sorry, I don't really cry at all the board meetings, but um, I. I'm so glad that we're doing this because it's been a fight for so many parents to, we were one that we didn't get to go to our neighborhood school. Um, we had to fight to get inclusion. We had to fight to get all those things. And so it's just wonderful to see that. Change is happening. So I mean, that's the whole reason I came on this board was because I wanted. To see this kind of stuff for every student to have the choice. And um. And I love that they're assigned to a general a class because a lot, when we were having problems. They wouldn't let him go into a class until the second week. By then, he didn't know any of the rules because all the kids already got the rules. So. It, you know, it's like he's not following the rules. Well, he didn't get the rules the same time everybody else did. So. I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate the neighborhood and the and the lot of the work that you're doing. I can't wait to see how well it's gonna be. And um, I think it's something that um, will be really, really um, supported by our families. I know it's kinda scary sometimes. But the um, outcomes I have seen, and they are just amazing, and the support. And I've seen some students that have grown up with um, kids with disabilities. I had one that. Um, went to college and they were in a class with someone with a disability, and none of the peers knew how to support. It was a more private school, knew how to support this student in their class. And she's like, how come no one knows how to do this? It's just autism. And I'm like, because they're not a student, they're not, they've never had a class with somebody with autism. So I think it's really important. For all kids to understand so they can support each other and. Cause we don't have a special needs target or a special needs, you know, outback. We all are eat and shop together. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Dawn. And we've seen data with our own students, that those are the students that have been in more mainstream settings. Have better long-term outcomes too, um, and than being in their community. Um, when we were at Westland um, High School, we were in a health class watching, and there was. Yeah, again, it's full inclusion, and this was their thirteenth year doing full inclusion. So um, we're in a class with, I think they were juniors. Um, and that's been their entire education, has been in the linguistic environments. And so, you know, we're talking with people, taking notes, doing what we can. And there was a student that was being suctioned. Um, you know, so air suctioned right in class, and nobody seemed bothered. His peer partner was still talking with them through it. It was, it was seamless. But there was one girl by the door by me, and she was like, what are you guys doing here? You know? And I, I said, well, we we came to see your program, you know, it's fully inclusive. And she's like, what? I said, well, you know, students with disabilities are. You know, in class right here with everybody else. And she's like, why would they be? And I said, well, in our um, school district, we have separate classes that students with disabilities attend. And she gave the most disgusted teenage look, and she was like, ew, why do you do that? And I was like, I love it. It was like, it was like. Such this important thing that like, these kids understand, like, why would we send kids to um, a different classroom when they're just their peers? They're just their friends. And so um, we we would like to continue to increase our more inclusive practices through secondary as well. Um, we're starting with elementary. We're doing, we are making some changes in the middle school by locating classrooms close together. Scheduling classes like English language support, um, math support, social skills and life skills at the same time with our three teachers. And then students can be placed in those classes because they follow a bell schedule based on their level of need and what intervention they need. Instead of based on who's TLC we have, who's um, ERC. The case management will still be a TLC and an ERC case management. But that's making some changes there too. So um, our big change being elementary. But as we have kids that grow up together in schools, and they just become used to it, and that just becomes our new model, then we'll start to see that load into our secondary as well. We'll, we'll have our kids saying, ew.
I'm curious, um, what are we doing to prepare those students to go into the classroom? Is that's gonna be a big adjustment for some of them, or? I mean, what, like, like Dawn's saying, not waiting a couple of weeks before, so they don't have a head start on everything. What are we doing to make, help them make that transition?
That's a really good question. We've been, we've been doing it as we've gone along. This has been, like I said, years-long practice and in. In increasing time and really a focus of our specialized staff to start mainstreaming a little bit. So we call them entry points. Where is an entry point that a student can go into a gen ed class, maybe PE, maybe recess, maybe lunchtime? And we've been increasing that. So most of our students have had some time. In fact, I can't think of any student. Who hasn't had time in a mainstream class. I can think of one secondary student, but most of our students have already started that progress of going into regular classrooms. Um, at Orchard Hill, for example, after spring break, they already started the case management shift. So that they could start working on IEPs with next year's case manager, and it went pretty well. It's just about increasing that time. Our big thing, um, maybe more so than um, students, because we're preparing them for practicing how to sit in circle time or how to sit your desk. But um, helping our general education staff feel like they have the skills to teach every student and their fans. And so um. You know, Brett can talk more about it, that are, you know, feeling for in-service and such. Next year is about instruction and inclusive practices. And making sure our teachers understand about universal design for learning, um, how to implement accommodations. We have a lot of collaboration time planned between special ed. And general ed staff, so that people feel confident in making sure that each student is receives a quality education in in a regular classroom.
From my own personal experience, at Phoenix High School, I had a classmate, she, I think she was a year behind me, but. She was with us in the mainstream and still friends now. I mean, in life, like, it's. It was um, an opportunity for me to help her and to be a partner of crime with her as she needed help in the classroom. But. It's interesting how, I I think maybe over time, and also maybe at that time, we had another place where people went. I know I'm not aware of that, but. We had that mainstreaming going on. When I was going to Phoenix Town School District, they were in the classroom with me. So it's interesting, over time. The theories that we've gotten. I don't know that there were IDPs at that time at all, for sure, but um. It, for me, that changed me, looking at her and also being a help to her and to be, I mean, I I still see her in our community, and I'm really grateful for. To know her and to know how, like you said, someone knows how to show up for someone else. So important. So I love this.
Yeah. And our high school does is, does a really good job with mainstreaming a lot of our students. Um, Ms. Sandlin's class, her TLC class, all of the students in there um, only spent a couple of periods with her. Most of their classrooms are in the mainstream. She has them for like, language arts and math, and then like some social skills, but they are, they're all taking electives. Um, and every one of our high school students at least takes one elective in the mainstream.
I saw this happen at graduation. It was beautiful. The support that was going on there with those folks, because it was so extremely hot and the the support that we had for those. Folks that were graduating, and it was a struggle to sit there and and all that was going on. It was beautiful to watch that um. Nearby us, for sure.
Especially if they have like sensory needs or medical needs.
A hundred percent.
The heat.
Yeah.
Really difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's um, I love the students, to see our students at the high school. I was just telling Nancy like, how hopeful her son was. With people, and that's really just like, learning that empathy, acceptance of all people. And that you just can't teach out of a book. You know, that's about um, like embracing the diversity of the students, including neurodiversity and um, you know. Just that we're all different, but really feeling part of the community. And like, I feel that at the high school, it's great. Um, but they already do a really great job. Hey, it was like several years ago, we stopped giving certificates of attendance and switched everybody to an extended diploma. A certified diploma or a regular diploma. And to get an extended diploma, students need to have two full credits and other, from a gen ed teacher. So that was that push that we were able to do to make sure every student got to be with a regular ed teacher too. And a lot. You know, that special ed staff's in there with them, within the classroom. Um, but not. You know, still allowing the students to have like dignity of risk, talking in class, or getting in trouble sometimes, but getting that extra support that they might need. But a lot of times it's those peers. If we can encourage peers to help out.
Yeah.
It's, it's even better to help them. I mean, I became a specialized teacher because in high school, I was an aide in the specialized classrooms. Um, and it just uh, like opened my eyes to like, the amazing people that, and students that we have in um, our schools. And so. For all teachers to be able to experience having students, um, all students, including our students with disabilities, is really a great gift. Um, I think they're gonna love them. We have some really great students in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. I really appreciate this um, how you opened up this conversation, bringing kids back to their neighborhood schools. I know the experience that you're sharing on that firsthand experience and how important and, I mean, it's so beautiful to see that emotion. And I hope people never have to feel like they have to apologize when we're human, because that's part of us thinking and crying, laughing, anger. All of those things are really great. Um, I really loved and appreciated the the comment about removing stimulus, because that is really important, right? Because sometimes our brain likes to categorize certain things, and how do we minimize those othering of other students, of different students? Um, so that feels incredibly wonderful. I really appreciate what you said about um. We want to have our kids feel like that they're part of a community where they belong and they're safe. And um, what happens to students and staff that have significant needs? Because. I think that there's still this complexity of equality and equity, right? We we intermix them, we change them, and. With different students, they have different needs, and not that we're othering them. We just want to show up in a way that it's really going to support their growth and development. In a way that also creates safety, not just for them, but for the people around them.
Mm-hmm.
And um, I had the pleasure, my best friend has worked in a um, special ed classroom in the, or not Phoenix, but Memphis forever. I mean, that's what she did. For a long time until she got sick. And just remembering a lot of the stories that she would tell and just hearing the challenges. And she continued to do it because she had this incredible love for these particular students. Um, similarly to what you said, right? You you have been in a classroom when you were in high school, prompted you to be a special ed teacher. Um, I think that that was also her motivation to to work in special ed in Memphis School District for many, many years. But I'm still curious, what is, you know, what, how do we mitigate those risks? Because I do, I guess in my head, I'm trying to figure out how do we strike that right balance where we're bringing. Safety and protection, not just for that particular student, but the students around them and staff around them and the whole. School system around them.
Mm-hmm. Safety, of course, is like number one concern.
Yeah.
Right? And um, sometimes we have students that um, might have difficulty uh, communicating, which then leads to some behavior. Um, that could be unsafe. I mean, I've been in special education for twenty-six years now. You know, it's not unusual that sometimes like. Uh, scars from being bit or, you know, being hit and such. But when we take it as like, well, this is a means of communication, it's really finding out. Um, what needs we need to meet for that student. Um, when I think about our own district and even the past year. A lot of our students, especially if they're new to our district, and we were trying to like, really find out their needs, was where we struggled a little bit. So I think the big thing would be training. Um, making sure that we get our specialists involved, and we have school psychologists, we have speech pathologists, and autism specialists. Um, and um, we have behavior plans, safety plans that go into it. Uh, but our big one is, you know, sometimes. Sometimes we have to provide protective equipment and gear uh, while we teach students some skills. Um, so that they can communicate in a more effective way. And that's just part of our job. Nobody goes into special ed, um, because they're like. Thing to part, like, you know, like, we're, every student's different, every student's a challenge. So if we can equip our staff with different tools and support. That is really um, how we're, we're gonna get through. I can't say that we won't have behavior needs. Things are gonna happen. That's, that's gonna happen. That's gonna happen if we have a a classroom of students with just disabilities, or they're in the regular classroom. But um, do know that we have a team making every decision for every child, and we wouldn't wanna put a child in a situation that we deemed as being. Unsafe or that we didn't staff well enough. We've had some that we we hired one-on-ones. We've had a couple of kids that we have two-on-ones for. Um, that we, we've increased our our staffing and our safety levels that we have. Um, you know, when we, when Senate Bill eight nineteen passed, and we could no longer do abbreviated day, that we did see some bumps in the road with that. Um, but I think we're able to mitigate those a little bit better too, because some students just don't have the stamina to be there all day yet. Our goal is to have everybody there full day. Um, but yeah, training, you know, trying to predict protection, having those behavior plans.
Yeah, and I'm grateful for that um, candid comment that, you know. It was a learning experience, and we hope that one day we do have a student that's like, what? That is such a foreign concept. What do you mean? We don't have everybody included. Like, what a cool thing to aspire to. And um, my hope is that during those transitions, and again, I just really want to reiterate. Um, not just the safety of the student, but the safety of the people around, because that can be incredibly hard in times where. I am very fortunate that I get to be in a lot of different meetings for a lot of different things, and the burnout is really real for teachers. You know, there's, there's a lot of um, students with behavioral needs. I mean, that's not only speaking about special ed, but just. Things that, like a young person hasn't quite learned or figured out or been able to manage quite well. And I'm just thinking about like, um. You know, teachers are asked to do so much. There's an incredible workload, and how do we make sure that we're supporting? In a way that it's really thoughtful and dignified as people's profession, and not just like. How do we hold both? Because both are really important, right? We want this incredible and fun inclusion, and we want to be able to protect. And um, support staff and people around students that just need additional support. So that's really important.
It's a, it is, it is a balance. Like I said before, it might mean that we have more staff. You see how many openings we have, because we do realize that more inclusive practices require more staff. And more trainings for staff. Um, just so we can provide those supports throughout the school and different locations.
And I'm hoping we might get like, maybe more updates on how this is going throughout the year, right? Like, we've heard updates on. Referrals or other updates. It might be really nice, just as we're learning how to build this as, as it's growing, that we can do the same.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So much gratitude for all the work that you do. A lot.
Okay, we have a consent agenda. Um, would someone like to make a motion?
I'd love to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Awesome, okay. Okay, thank you. Um, and now we're gonna go on to the information discussion. Um, we have a legislative and OSBA update.
I don't really have. I don't really have much to say. It's towards the end. There's only a little bit going on, um. Some things have passed that are gonna be a challenge to our two districts and then there's, you know. There's some good things, but um, we'll just have to figure them out and hopefully, um, if there is some challenges, we can. Bring them up a short session and um, go from there. There's some. More cuts and how they're gonna work out isn't quite there yet, but we are getting there. I think. Uh, we have a call on Friday and then I think that's our last Friday call, but then. Uh, there will be some time to give input. I don't, I think it's called the rules. I. I participated last uh, two years ago and then. After bills are passed, then, then it goes to like the rules to figure out the. Small things and no one ever goes to those. I went to one and I was the only one online. So I just like, they're like, do you have anything to say? And I'm like, sure. I just talked to him for like thirty minutes. Um, and. There was no one else there. It wasn't taking up any, they had to be online, so I might as well um, use their time wisely and. Um, advocate for our district and our um, region. So I think that will be coming up. So just kind of keep an eye, but things have, have slowed down in that aspect.
I'll just share a little bit too with um, as we start getting state school fund that's uh, getting locked in. Student Success Act is getting hit a little bit, um, as well as high school success. So we'll see those final numbers hopefully soon. Um, I think I mentioned to Dawn um, earlier, I am gonna uh. Attend that A S A, which is the Superintendent National Group Advocacy Conference in DC in July. Um, COSA's supporting that, um. So it, it won't cost the district uh, as much as it would to go in uh, normally, but they also support that. Effort and my focus will be the mental health grant that we set, um, are. Can be losing in December and advocating for that to continue as promised for two more years. That probably happened.
I did see that OSBA update saying that the, they cut forty-five million in the funding for early childhood.
Yeah.
Programs. That was today. I didn't dig anything more from that.
Early, that's, that's early childhood.
Uh, special ed services, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I will tell you, just for overall K twelve did okay. Their early childhood, I mean, there are other. Organizations and, and services that, that got hit pretty good. So um, for the most part with the partnership of COSA and OSBA. Um, we, we hung in there, especially with that current service level, state school fund, but still not nearly enough.
Okay, and then we have a financial report.
Speaking of not nearly enough, um. Yasmin is uh, finalizing the numbers and, and you know, we have encumbrances throughout the year, so she has these as clean as possible. And um, you know, with her leadership and really moving into next year, as we knew, we were. Were carrying a balance in that um, is favorable and positive to us, but we know when fire. Fire relief money is gone, that, that gets uh, that dwindles pretty quick, so I'll turn it over to Yasmin.
Yeah, so I, I have the report through May. It's just an update from what we had in March. Uh, we pretty much have all the numbers that we have for the state school fund. And for property factors that were already calculated of the projected everything to June. Uh, and they may change a little bit after the audit, because we always have to um. See what the calendar is showing and we think, then we'll have to make some adjustments, but it's pretty much what we just have looking at the two. Uh, that percentage went up a little bit. I have to push some V O's. Next year because they won't be done uh, till the end of June. Um. So our percentage right now for any of our estimates are less than a twenty-three point five percent. Uh, what I was going to mention is that the um, A B M security grant is already available for us to pay. But since we have a low budget for next year, we're gonna wait to bring that to August. And so we can go ahead and, and use it for next year. So I just wanted to mention that. It's already available. And I assume that they only wanted to go ahead and fund it because the end of the grant. Is two to three. So it was unexpected, but it's there available for us to pay. Um, other than that, for June. The calculations I have is just interest, maybe about seventy-five thousand. We have some P S, P S in Virginia for the chosen entity, about, you know, the three hundred thousand. Two hundred fifteen to three hundred thousand. So it's just some miscellaneous revenues that I have to calculate it. But at the end of the day, you know, it depends on what we receive. And these numbers may change a little bit, so. Anyway, um, other than that, I don't know if you have any questions for general fund. It's pretty much. Very similar to what I have given you in March, uh, just with more finalized numbers.
Any questions?
Well, um, on the second page, we have the, the bond fund. It's a little bit lower, but I have to go there because we have some of the invoices that he made. Um, for the Culver Road project and also some that we have been. Um, that we didn't know we, we didn't pay. There were all invoices for the finishing of the tennis, the tennis uh, force. At the high school, so I have, I've had a call in this part to say some words, but. Uh, so um, it's about a hundred thousand less than I had anticipated our input balance. So I just wanted to mention that to you. Excuse me. And for the um, C E T fund. I had to remove three hundred twenty-two thousand that we were supposed to pay at the end of June. But I talked to John in the second project for the T N S summer. It's going to be pushed until the end of July or August, the completion. So then um, that's why it's showing a higher balance than we had in March. So it's about six hundred seventy-four thousand. That we're expecting to add. And I think that's all I have for, thank you.
Here Yasmin.
You have any questions?
Rick's not here to ask the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Yasmin. And then we have, um, sure, correct, right? Oh, um. So Denise has done us a favor to put all these things together. So um, I, I don't know if you took the time to read those, but it's talking about like who's in charge of what, basically. And these are for your review because at the next meeting, we'll be having them as action items. So I don't know if anyone had any questions about those. It seems like a lot, mostly typically. Which.
I think it looks nice because they're in this. It looked so big when they were on, I mean, we used to have on the agenda.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Because I'm like, it seems like it's less than normal, but maybe, yeah.
But yeah, I, I just want to thank Denise for looking into this and seeing how uh, we can do that and streamline a lot, so, um, and this is. The way to do it.
So great.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you. As always, keeping us in line. And then we have the certified negotiations that we settled. Uh, we had that statement earlier. And those uh, copies are there. Um, so the, the final. There's still a meeting that's going to happen and then after that, probably the next meeting will be taking care of that, right?
Yeah, I just want to thank Jessica and Dawn and, and that team for um. And our partner with P T E A, they, they worked uh, um, late into the night on. Uh, that June Friday and um, uh, got a deal. And so they're gonna uh, really kind of go through with a fine tooth comb next week. And this will be on for action. Enjoy.
And if you have any questions about something, you can ask me or Jessica or Brent, but. Um, yeah, because there's some changes and it may, hopefully it makes crystal clear sense, but if it doesn't, please do ask. So do we want to skip the recess and go to action items? I'm being good about that. Okay. Um, so the first one is, I'm excited about this and I, I talked to Rick last. Tonight and he said he was excited and he wholeheartedly supports this first one that we're talking about. Um, the Board Member Development Fund's request for Rebecca. Um, I don't know if uh, someone like to make a motion and then if we have any questions?
I would move to approve um, the Board Member Development Fund request as presented.
Please second that.
Any questions about this? We kind of talked about it last time.
I would just say I'm so glad that Rebecca's going and one of the people that is speaking spoke at pace and he was wonderful. So I'm glad that she's able to hear him too. And I think that um, she'll come back with, I can't wait to hear all the ideas. If just as she comes back and, and not only for our board, but for the safety committee too. So I'm very excited for Rebecca.
I always want to say thank you for always taking like the best notes over there.
Just in case I need to look back.
Yeah, I love it. I'm not making fun, I love it. Um, because I sit by you when I go to the OSBA conference. Um, the next one, we have an action item. This is an academic calendar. Oh, sorry, we have to vote. I forget this every time.
Okay.
Then you have to tell me. Okay, Nancy.
Yes.
Rebecca.
I think you need to.
You have to vote tonight.
That's right, because there's one word.
Yes. Dawn, yes. And I vote yes as well. So I just forget the voting part.
Abstain can count as.
And, no, he needs, they know. She has to be here.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just like.
Okay, then we have the calendar where we had the change for the kind of the service part with the newly hired staff.
Yeah, and it, it just, it just impacted the nudity hire. It doesn't impact any other um, um, students or other regular ed staff. And we're moving that first day to Thursday because we will have technically a non-contract day, but we'll pay staff to do CPI training on that Friday.
Good. Um, and do we have a motion?
I move to approve the change of the twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar as presented.
Second that.
Okay. Any other questions about that? Um, I will vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And then we have our next meeting agenda, which I'm excited about. Because someone in the audience is going to be joining us. We're excited about this. I'm excited to hang out with her in the community as well. Got to do that this week, so I was happy about that. Um, and then we have those um. Items up for action that we talked about, the, the summary that we're doing that, uh, that we talked about today. Any questions about that?
I will likely be online.
Okay.
That, uh, because that's a week of advocacy conference, so.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, I'll journal.
Six fifty.